Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the St. Cloud School Board. Our mission is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today and tomorrow's society. Next is the pledge of allegiance. Bruce Moes, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the Constitution of America.
Thank you. Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Shannon Hawes.
Here.
Jeff Polis.
Here.
Jerry Von Korf.
Here.
Al Dahlgren.
Here.
Bruce Moes, here. Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Here.
And Bruce Hentges.
Here.
And the record will show that Superintendent Willie Jeth is with us this evening as our Assistant Superintendent Marcia Bice and our Executive Directors, Joni Olson, Carol Potter, Gary Gunji, and this is Kevin Janaszewski, Tracy Bowe, and Tammy Deland.
Thank you. First up tonight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the Board may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the agenda. This evening, we are going to pull Item J, Bid Award, ISD 742, Early Childhood and Community Education Center, and we will vote on that separately. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda minus Item J?
Mr. Chair, I move for the acceptance of the consent agenda minus Item J.
Moes?
Second.
Mr. Von Korf, is there any discussion?
No, I'd like to...
Jeff.
Like to discuss Item...Item G3. I just want to say an extra kudos to the International Association Alliance for that $75,000 donation they had. It's going to the Talahee Playground, I understand. Just want to send a thank you out there for them.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Bruce Hentges?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Bruce Moes, yes.
Next, we pulled Item J, Bid Award, ISD 742, Early Childhood and Community Education Center. There's been some changes to some of the bids, and I'm going to have Kevin Janaszewski explain.
Evening, Mr. Dahlgren and members of the Board, Superintendent Jeth. The change from the agenda that we got a recommendation from our attorneys for is 31A, the earthwork, to actually reject them all, and we'll rebid those next week and open them on the 11th or the 10th or the 11th and have an approval for it on the 12th of March. The reason being the polling, the low bid came in and they...there was a crossed out number with a initial not by the original signer of the bid, and the easiest way to kind of take care of that issue was a recommendation from the attorney to just reject them all and rebid it.
Could you say again which bid item?
31A, earthwork.
So then Kevin will rebid these, and then they will come back to us at the April...
12.
12th meeting?
Meeting, yeah.
Okay.
For approval. And it still meets their expected start time for the project. They were going to start three weeks from now, so...
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the Item J, Bid Award, ISD 742, Early Childhood and Community Education Center, minus...which number was it, Kevin?
31A.
31A, or not minus 31A, but changing 31A to reject all.
A. Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion now.
Jeff?
Second.
I'll second.
Bruce, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just as a point of discussion, does this then go through the Finance Committee? Does the Finance Committee review this in any manner? Just as a point of information.
No, we haven't.
Why?
Go ahead.
Bruce?
No, go ahead. I was just...my question was, why would it need to go back through the Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Do you want to know the process? I can explain the process that the district goes through.
Yes, it's just a process question.
Yeah. So the architects do the design. They do all the specifications. Then they put it out for bid. They don't, actually. The construction managers then put it out for bid out onto the public, and we still post it on our websites, but they still go out and reach out to different vendors to try to bid on them, and then they have an opening. The opening was last Friday. They then go through those bids, the construction managers do, and then make their recommendations based on those.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that, and I failed to identify that as a process question, therefore prompting some bewilderment on the Board, but it was a process question is all it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
So I would just say, when the low bid fails to comply with material conditions, the low bid at least has to be rejected, and the attorney has made a judgment that we must reject. Then we have the discretion, so let's say the second bid was $50 lower, we would have the discretion to take the second bid. But here, I assume the reason that we're rejecting all bids is because the low bid was so much lower, and we don't like the...
Yeah, and it...again, it was the anomaly of what the statute says, again, for school districts was, if there's a crossed out number, it has to be initialed by the person that signed the bid.
Yep. I'm not questioning that. I'm just adding that you have some discretion whether to recommend to us to...
Sure.
...take the second bid or to rebid.
Yep.
And as I understand, you went back and asked if it was going to create any problems with the timing of this work, and it was not. If we do that at the May 12th meeting?
April 12th.
April 12th meeting.
Yes. There wouldn't be a problem.
So everything would be okay, so the best way to do it was to go back and rebid.
We'd still be on timeline, yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion...
We had a motion.
Oh, we had a motion. We had a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Bruce Moes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up on the agenda is a Lincoln Elementary School presentation, Principal Brianne Hearn, along with students and staff. Welcome.
Good evening. Well, first of all, we'd like to say thank you so much for inviting us to share our excitement over our school. My name is Brianne Hearn. I'm the principal at Lincoln Elementary. And with me today, I have my administrative intern, Shelley Gilmore, and our academic coach, Todd Peterson, and a few very excited and maybe a little nervous young scholars that are going to present as well. And a small secret for you all, I'm a little nervous too. Okay. We're going to start out by just sharing with you a little bit about who we believe Lincoln is. We believe Lincoln is a small, caring community that provides access for all. We opened in 1949, and currently we have about 320 students in attendance. In addition, we also are hosting one of our early childhood voluntary pre-K programs, and we have 15 students in attendance for that as well. Lincoln is a diverse body, bringing multiple perspectives. We have many cultures represented in our building, including about 74% to 75% students of color. Lincoln is a global voice representing our broader St. Cloud area community. We have eight home languages that are represented in our small building, and so many of our students are coming to us by tri and multilingual. Lincoln is a family with a growth mindset focused on strengths of our students. Our students are coming to us with many strengths, regardless of what might be perceived as some challenges in their lives, as you can see by the data on your screen. Although what we see is, we see students who are coming with a deep connection to the arts, with curiosity, independence, out-of-the-box thinking, global citizenship, and tenacity. We'd like to share with you at this time our Lincoln Proud video. Lincoln Elementary is a small, close-knit community right in the heart of St. Cloud. We work very hard to forge connections among all of our students, staff, and families, with our number-one goal being that all families and students feel represented and cared for in our building.
I love the great community sense. I love the great fact that we're such a small school, with such small class sizes. It really gives us the opportunity to really engage the students one-on-one, along with our technology, which really gives us the opportunity to give them tools to engage their learning as well.
Every day I come to Lincoln, I'm so excited to see the kids in the hallway. They approach me in the hall asking, "What are we going to learn about?" And what's fun is, they want to know what...what they're saying is, they want to know what challenging activities they're going to be doing today.
We have such a caring staff. The community is awesome, and we're always looking out for one another, and we're always looking out for the students that we have. We have a terrific, small student body, and we're able to really start working with them, meeting their needs, and it's just a great community, a great feeling to show up to work every day.
I love the co-teaching model here at Lincoln Elementary. It's nice to have someone come in for that full 16-minute literacy block. It helps with teaching the students different comprehension strategies, as well as developing their skills. It's also nice to have her in the classroom because she helps with the stations that we do in our classroom.
We here at Lincoln really value social-emotional learning competencies for our students, and we do a really nice job finding out if our students are needing extra support socially, emotionally, and we have a group of people here at Lincoln that work to meet the needs of those students, whether those are interventions within the classroom, sometimes interventions outside of the classroom, et cetera. We have a good team here for that. We're lucky to have a full-time counselor here. A lot of elementaries don't have that, and which gives us the opportunity to help kids to learn how to deal with feelings, learn how to build positive friendships, and how to solve problems in a positive way, so that they love school and they do well in the school. And so we have lots of opportunities for small groups, for class lessons, and for helping parents to connect to community resources, if that's something that they...
I also work with the students and to help them resolve their problems and challenges that they face in school. It do help also teachers and other school staff, so we can bridge the cultural gap that exists.
The orchestra program at Lincoln is an opportunity for 5th grade students to learn violin, viola, cello, bass. They get smaller group lessons twice a week and put on several concerts throughout the year. They can participate in the orchestra all the way through graduation of high school, and they get their start here at Lincoln.
My favorite thing about Lincoln are the students here. I love working with the families, and our staff are positive, they're compassionate, and they are really driven to help our students learn.
I want students to feel comfortable with their school and proud of what they are creating. I want them to show it off to their peers, and I want them to develop that ha-ha sense that I can do whatever I want to do.
You know, I love coming here. The attitudes of everybody are always positive. I think my favorite part about Lincoln is that how supportive we are, not just of the students, but of each other.
I love working at Lincoln because they have very great staff who are helpful.
Lincoln Proud!
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 So as we move into our presentation tonight, we'd like to take a little time to explain to you our journey to where we are today. We have some data to share with you briefly that will give you some pieces of information about our students, and then the rest of our presentation will kind of really wrap around the whole child. Currently, at Lincoln, we've got about 21.5% students who are receiving services for EL, which has been on the rise. We did not see a large population of EL in our building until 2014. We are just over 90% students with free or reduced-price lunches, and you can see historically we have been around that number as well. Students at Lincoln who receive special education services is nearing that 20% mark right now. And a quick overview of our MCA performance, you can see the trends, Lincoln being the orange bar. You can see that we've had a significant increase in reading scores from 2015 to 2016, and that increase actually brought our building off the continuous improvement watch list, which was a huge success. So these are just a piece of the story. We'd also like to share with you some information about growth for our MCA reading. You can see that in 2015, 27% of our students had high growth, and this is for 4th and 5th grade, since 3rd grade is their first testing opportunity. And in 2016, we bumped that up extremely to 41% of our students receiving or earning high growth. A state average is about 30%, so that was significantly above the state. The growth demonstrated by our Black students in 2015 was 24%, whereas in 2016, we saw a nice jump again to 42%. And at Lincoln, we're working very hard to implement high-impact instructional strategies to specifically target our racial achievement gap, but what we're finding out is that those strategies are just good strategies for all of our students. In this slide, you can see that when you look at the proficiency of white students with MCA reading, from 2015 to 2016, we saw significant gains, even going up above the St. Cloud district average and nearing the state average within two points. When we look at math, we unfortunately did see a small dip in our math scores last year, jumping down to 42% proficiency. However, when you look at growth of our 4th and 5th graders, once again, we're seeing a tremendous amount of high and medium growth, well over the state average. So this summer, our leadership team got together, and knowing all of that information and those pieces of data, we determined a target page that is used to really guide our vision and our goals for this year. That target page has an overall goal of our Lincoln School family values a culture of academic and personal growth that fosters success for all. This target page became our why behind our work, and within that target page, we have four priority goals. Seeing as the target page is our goal over the next few years, those four goals were the ones that we really wanted to tackle this year. Our overall goal for this year was to go from that 42% proficiency up to over 50%, and so we decided that the best way to say that is tipping the scales for student achievement.
And good evening, Chairman Dahlgren, Board, Superintendent Jeth. Like Principal Hearn said, I'm Todd Peterson. I'm the academic coach over at Lincoln, and I'm just going to share priority goal number one from that target page, and that goal states, "We value collaboration and can learn from one another." And so this evening, we engage in a lot of collaborative activities over at Lincoln, and I just want to focus on a few that we have found to be very successful, working within our teachers, building the collaboration model, and then seeing that success then funnel down into our students. The first one is our data teams, and we engage in our data teams three times each month, and in those grade-level teams, teachers come together, and they analyze data that they've gathered from teacher-created assessments, and then those assessments have been built off of priority standards that they identified early in the year, and they're using these pre- and post-test assessments to gather data around, "How can we build on student strengths? What are those students' strengths? How can we bring other students up to then also share those same strengths?" Another piece of our collaboration is the Wednesday morning leadership team meetings, and in these teacher-led meetings, teachers come together and they share initiatives that they want to bring forward to the school. Among those, we have our family engagement team and PBS team, and those are going to be focused on a little bit more in future slides, but these are teachers coming together with ideas to then share out to the larger school community. Next up, we have our teacher-led professional development, and this is an opportunity for us to develop and share the genius in the building that's already there. This is an opportunity for the three of us to step back and then to allow teachers to bring what they've had in their own professional development, their own teaching background, and then share in these sessions that staff then go to. This is a way that we can share the knowledge in the building. This is the way that teachers can create a culture that they want to see other practices taking place. And finally, we have our co-teaching model, and co-teaching takes place every day in the classroom for that one hour of our literacy block, and then we also come together once a month, and we share in a professional development and planning session, and these sessions go for two hours for every grade level. And we always start with a piece of data, and so I want to share the last piece of our coaching, co-teaching, by focusing on the student and teacher growth, and these are the exact same slides and images that you might see if you were to come to one of our co-teaching sessions. The first part there in the upper right-hand corner is the teacher growth, and this is data compiled from a teacher's self-assessment around one of the facets of co-teaching. And so in September, when teachers first came together, if you can see closely there, they're in the beginning of the developing phase. This is how they felt about their co-teaching practice, and when we came back to December, and even if we looked at when they came back to us in February, you can see that teachers are feeling much more comfortable around areas of co-teaching. Then the last piece there focuses on the student growth side, and once a month, our students are taking progress monitoring tests, and this is another way for us to gather data to see how teacher or student development is coming along, and so we look at students that aren't proficient in their fall and their winter benchmarks. And you'll see that from early on in November, going all the way then through February, more and more of our students that weren't proficient, yet those benchmarks are now meeting proficiency. And we ended last session in February with 70% of our students that were initially not proficient, meeting high and rigorous growth goals.
I'm Shelley Gilmore. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm the administrative intern at Lincoln. Our priority goal, too, is we model a growth mindset and encourage the achievement of rigorous goals. Not only are we concerned about academics, we are concerned about the whole child at Lincoln, so we have several social-emotional supports for our students, as well as academic supports. And the picture you see up there right now is of our 3rd graders ice skating at the MAC this week. Research tells us that the only path to learning is through students feeling safe, students feeling loved and supported, and students being ready to learn. And what we do at Lincoln is we really focus to make sure that students are on that path. So we make sure that each of our teachers has predictable routines, procedures, and expectations, especially for our students who come to school with challenges that they may face at home. They can feel safe at school. Also, it's really important that we provide connections with adults, meaningful relationships, and a meaning and purpose for each child to be a part of the class and to be a part of our school community, to help them feel loved and to help them feel supported. With this, when our students feel safe and when our students feel loved, they are then ready to learn. Every day, we start out our day with our Lincoln pledge, and I would like to invite our students to lead us in our pledge. I am talented, smart, and successful. I have dreams and goals. I will work hard. I am safe, kind, and will do my best. I am an all-star. So this is an affirmation that we use every day to help students put on their scholarly hat and be ready to learn. The picture that we're showing up there is showing things that we do around mindfulness. So we have a curriculum that's called Mind Up, where it focuses on breathing, it focuses on working through frustration, it focuses on being ready to learn. I'd like to share some of our PBIS data to date. You can see the green zone. These are our students that have zero to You can see the green zone, these are our students that have zero-to-one discipline referrals. The goal is for, is to be in that 80% range. You can see yellow zones, students with two to five discipline referrals, and the red zone, students with six or more discipline referrals. The problem with this graph is that once a student has more than six office discipline referrals, that doesn't change throughout the year. If they got six in the first two weeks, they continue to have six and they show up as a red student. So it's important that you understand that we, again, educate the whole child, and we have 41 students right now that are on individual plans, that are helping them develop the skills that they're lacking, that might be skills in dealing with frustration, skills in understanding the word "no" and accepting the word "no." So for each of those students, we build those skills so they are ready to learn. We have proactive breaks, we have skill groups, we have check-in, check-out, developing relationship with specific people in the building so they feel safe, they feel loved, and they are ready to learn. And those with interventions are showing a decrease in their office discipline referrals. So when you take a look at the next graph here, from September to November, we had 644 discipline referrals. When you check out another chunk of time, from December to February, we moved to 327. And in March, if you were to bring that up to three months, we are still below. So the interventions and skill work that we're having to help the whole child be able to be safe, be loved, and ready to learn are really making a difference. And now I would like to turn it over to our Young Scholars program.
So as our young scholars come on up to join me, I'll give you some information about the program at Lincoln. So at Lincoln, we have 75 students who participate in Young Scholars, and what that looks like for our K-1, 2 students is about 30 minutes weekly, and our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students participate for about 90 minutes weekly. Their focus is on growth mindset, critical thinking skills, and just recently, our 4th graders here have started working on peer mentoring. So I'm going to ask them to come up. I've got Emily will introduce an activity, and she's going to test your growth mindset
We are excited to introduce the Teaching Kids to Struggle Challenge. It's a paper folding and cutting activity that will help you understand the concept of struggling when things are difficult. We will hand out scissors, a paper each of you, along with a model for you to recreate. By the way, you cannot touch the model. You will be given 90 seconds to attempt this task. During this time, we will observe. Good luck.
Can we see a thumbs up if you are ready to begin? You may begin.
One more time with directions, please.
Emily, one more time. I don't know if they were listening.
We will hand out the scissors and paper to each of you, along with a model for you to recreate.
All right, we will stop. Okay, you may have noticed, our young scholars here were walking around and they were listening to what was coming out of your mouth to find growth mindset phrases. Anybody have an example of a growth mindset phrase?
Did I do it?
We may need to work on growth mindset. So before they head out, I wonder if the four of you could share with us, how does growth mindset help you in the classroom?
Even if you struggled, you tried.
Even though some of you might have got it wrong, you tried.
So Emily has one last message for you, and we'll wrap up our growth mindset activity. Oh, I'm sorry, Kimora has one message.
Thank you for participating in this challenge. As you can tell, this was difficult, and you can now imagine what it might feel like to be a student, to be a student in the classroom when learning is a struggle. At Young Scholars, we learn how to overcome these obstacles through positive thinking and growth mindset.
Thank you so much. You did an awesome job. You can get your materials. I know Ms. Conway will want them back tomorrow. Do you, would you like to keep your model? We could allow them to keep their model. As they are collecting their models, we'd like to share with you some interesting information about our young scholars at Lincoln. They are definitely focused on that growth mindset, and like they said, they've been working on, what do you do when you hit a challenge in learning? And what we found interesting, coming back to some academic data, is that 76% of our students in our Young Scholars program meet or exceed star-reading growth expectations of 40% or higher, which is an accelerated growth goal for kids. So 76% of these students. And overall, we're at about 58% of all of our Lincoln students. So they are just doing an awesome job. Our third priority goal is that learners will set goals and monitor progress toward achievement of these goals. Some of the ways that we're doing that at Lincoln, like Mr. Peterson said, are our data teams. We're also participating in those co-teaching monthly meetings. Most recently, though, we did what we call teacher talks. And the way that looked at Lincoln, all 16 of our classroom teachers had a homework assignment. Their children were very excited to hear that, and their homework assignment was to be prepared for their teacher talk with their "Why Am I an Educator?" statement. So when they came in, we started out with their "Why Do I Do This?" statement and moved out to "How Do I Want to Show Up for Kids Every Day?", and then moved into the "What Are We Going to Do to Support the Students in My Classroom?" You can see there's a poster of all of their handwritten "Why?" statements, and when we put them all together, the bigger the word, the more often we saw it. These are their "Why?" statements all as one. Our last priority goal for this year is to build trusting collaborative relationships among all stakeholders, students, staff, families, and community. We've done a number of things to reach this goal this year, participated in a welcome audit, where we invited in several community members and parents to walk through the building and give us feedback on how we're doing. We've hosted a second round of Parents in Action, where we had nearly 30 graduates this year, and you can see their photo of a few of our graduates. We've had many family engagement events, including in the bottom left, you'll see a photo of a kindergarten classroom event for parents. The top right, you'll see that our students were asked to sing at the dedication of the Lincoln statue downtown St. Cloud. And in the bottom right, you'll see a group of Apollo athletes that came over to read to our students in the classroom. So as we kind of wrap up what we've talked about today, Lincoln is a building that was built in 1949, and in the year of 1949, the doors opened, and a young mother dropped her child off at the doors, five years old, and walked that child in. And I had the pleasure yesterday of meeting this young mother. She's 100 years old, will be 101 soon. And I'd like to just share with you some information that was in a follow-up email from her son regarding her visit. "My mother and I talked about it at lunch. We came to the realization that this is a unique Lincoln story. Mom marveled at all the changes that represent the present, but we also shared remembrances of the same spirit of teaching and learning that were part of her parental experiences and my student experiences. The spirit of Lincoln is just as evident today as it was nearly 70 years ago. Thank you for permitting mother and son a chance to share and reminisce once again important memories of a school that was so foundational and transformational in the lives of a young mother and her children so long ago. Those same lessons and experiences are shaping the lives of a new generation of students, teachers, and parents today." We want to thank that young mother for coming back to visit us, and her wonderful son, who happens to be our school board liaison. Mr. Mo shared with me when I first met with him regarding Lincoln, that the message of Lincoln is, "You can get there from here. You can get there from here." Such a simple message, and I want to say that to my young scholars that are with us tonight. You can get there from here, wherever there is. And we've got a member here, we have an honorary t-shirt to thank you for your visit last night, and we really appreciate your time tonight, letting us talk about how proud we are to be Lincoln Elementary.
Does anyone have any questions for Breon? Jeff?
I just have two things. Breon, I want to commend you guys on the work you're doing for your discipline stuff. Keep up the good work, and you're going to put me out of a job.
That's our goal.
Yeah, that's a good goal. Second thing, please educate me. I noticed on one of your slides, it says 7.5% homelessness. What does that mean?
Those are students who have identified themselves in a category of maybe transitional housing or not currently in a permanent residence.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Jerry?
I'm going to say a few words in support of our legislative people and connected to Lincoln. You know, I've noticed that all across the school district, we're showing these dramatic improvements in reading. And the, this cuts across racial and ethnic lines, it cuts across poverty and non-poverty. And our superintendent put, asked us to put a ton of resources into the, into reading, for professional staff development, for co-teaching, for people that we might have thought, five or six or seven years ago, teaching coaches, people would say, "Why do you need a teaching coach? The teachers are supposed to know how to teach, they have their degree." And all of these things together, and the change in the curriculum and what's going on in the curriculum department and Lori Posh and those folks, all of those things require working smarter, and you're working smarter, you can feel that you're working smarter, but they also require the counselors, the support people who are bringing kids back when they're, when they're struggling, the coaching and all of that. And this year in the legislature, we've got a move to cut back on the support for schools with, to delink the increases in educational support for compensatory education. We've got people who are saying that, you know, we've kind of been too generous in the growth of, of the formula, and let's put that money into giant tax cuts and so on. But I just, I just wish that those people would come and see, because people say, oh, they're just throwing money at it, but what you're doing is not just throwing money at it, but you're using bright people and doing things in a different way, and we're seeing now, year over year over year in reading, we're seeing year over year, these huge gains that are coming from the money, plus the curriculum changes, plus the staff additions, plus, plus working smarter. And, you know, I just really would hate to see, we've had some good years now where we've gotten support from the legislature, I just really, this is really something that, that is really Bruce's mission to pass along, that let's, let's keep it up, let's, let's not go backwards and lose faith at the legislature that, that we can make a difference for kids like you are. So thanks for what you're doing.
Monica?
Thank you very much for the presentation and to the kids. Yeah, go keep up with that work, and I love the scholars. And that was fun. So you forgot to say that, because I think that that was very fun. I have a question for you. I was looking at the makeup of your school, and I wanted to ask you about the makeup of your staff and what challenges you have there, and what requests do you have for administration and, and the board, looking towards the future? Could you, could you explain, could you talk about that, please?
Right. You know, our staff would, would probably mirror most of our district with the majority of our teachers being white teachers. We, we do have some staff members who are from other cultures than, than that, but, but honestly, that is something that we struggle with, with finding and hiring. You know, I'm hopeful that some of the licensure programs or some alternative pathways to being an educator will help with that, but it definitely is something that we look at every year and wonder, what can we do better? It did come up in our welcome audit, our families recognize, you know, the staff doesn't look like the students here, and so we're hopeful that we can do whatever we need to do to support those alternative pathways to licensure, so that there are opportunities available that maybe weren't there before.
Follow-up? But I'd like you to go a little bit deeper if you can, and if you cannot, or maybe you need to think about it, that's, that's okay. But, but I'd like you to explain to us better, why is that important? If you have an example or something that, that comes to mind about, that, that really gets to fill in our hearts, why do we need that?
You know, I think the statement that you heard me say at the beginning of the video, "We want our children to feel like they're represented." They want, we want-
They want, we want our kids to feel like they see themselves and to bring in multiple cultures and lenses to the work that we're doing, so that we're really seeking out a bigger perspective for all kids. So every kid comes and says, "I see me here," you know. And I think that, for me, that's the big, the umbrella. I don't know, does that answer somewhat?
Bruce Henshaw's.
Sure, Dolgren. I would just like to echo what has been said and say congratulations on an excellent presentation and on the enthusiasm that all three of you showed in making that presentation. Enthusiasm is contagious, and certainly, the research shows that the leadership of a school is vital to the success of that school. It's vital to the climate of a school. And I think that you showed, you know, just by your presentation tonight, the enthusiasm that you bring to your job and that it rubs off on your students also. So, great job with that. I would want to add one thing. You mentioned that your Lincoln singers sang at the unveiling of the Lincoln statue downtown. Well, they also sang at the Late Night of the Stars in February, and they did a fabulous job with Ms. Susan Genie, your director, and the students had a great deal of enthusiasm and were just really well received by the crowd. So, great job. And I know that at least one of the singers is with you tonight, so just make sure you pass on the congratulations to that group. A couple of them are, I guess. Okay, good.
They noted that it would be three.
There's three, okay. Great. Wow, great job, you guys.
Thank you.
Willie Jett?
And pardon me for my voice at the moment, but I wanted to echo something or piggyback something that Mr. Henshaw just said. One of the things that he mentioned was leadership matters. Okay? And he said, "Leadership matters." And Principal Hearn is in her first year as the interim principal at Lincoln. And so it was a no-brainer for us as a district administration with her staff, and you read it recently, that it was a no-brainer for us to take that interim tag off and make her the permanent principal at Lincoln Elementary. And she's done a wonderful job in her first year, and we're just pleased that she has accepted the permanent position at Lincoln Elementary.
With gusto. Very happy to serve.
Bruce Smalls?
Mr. Chair, it's always a risk, isn't it, to talk last after such wonderful testimonies from my colleagues? But I'm just wanting to express something here deeply. Education, education's a calling. It's a profession. We work at it. It's a job. It's a career, but it's a calling. And required in Collins is a deep, deep love and commitment to what we do. And I recall so much, I remember when you spoke at the beginning of your presentation about Lincoln being a small, caring community providing access for all. It reminded me then, and I would beg the indulgence of my colleagues on the board, that every one of us has a journey in our life. And you spoke so well about telling your students that you can get there from here, here being Lincoln, and there being where they want to go. But I can just say by experience, I got here where I am because I was there where you were. And that journey was a journey started forty-nine years ago. And as the video showed, this young boy, five years old, and a young mother, thirty-three at the time, the first of three sons, that she walked up to the door of Lincoln and, as all mothers do, turned over her children in a very difficult moment for mothers and fathers, turned over those children to a caring, loving staff a long time ago. They are all gone now. But all of the teachers and staff and parents that are part of the Lincoln community now are continuing that culture and climate of success and achievement. And if I can just show some emotion about this, because you can't do this without emotion. You can't be on that journey, young ladies and gentlemen, and any one of us. You can't be on a journey in life and do it alone. You've just got to do it with other people. I was in the hallway after my mother, I very intentionally left the room, left my mother with the two of you, because you should talk as mothers and as parents and didn't need to have me hanging out in there. I'd done my job and got my dear mother to you. I was walking in the halls and just minding my own business, of course. I know how to walk the halls and not be doing anything but just politely looking in and taking in the atmosphere. One of your young employees, Jama Mohammed, was walking down the hall with a young boy. And he saw me, and he came right up to me, just broke free from Jama and came up to me and said, "Do you know that I have a grandmother that's a hundred years old and she lives in Africa?" And I got down on my knee so I could look him right in the eye, and I says, "That's wonderful. Do you want to know something else? There's another one-hundred-year-old lady, and she's in that room right over there. I think I can introduce you to her. Do you want to meet her?" And he was delighted. And Jama and this young boy walked into your office, Breann, and this young boy just walked right up to this elderly woman and said, "My grandma is a hundred, and she lives in Africa." And my mother said, "I'm a hundred, and I live right here in St. Cloud." And they both embraced each other, and it was a tender moment. But it reminds us that every one of us profits from the time and the talent and the treasure that we put into our children. We profit by these children. And we often say that time, talent, and treasures, those words start with T, that rhymes with P, and that stands for promise. A promise was made to a boy sixty-eight years ago that he would have an opportunity to succeed. That was that promise then. It's the same promise we're working so hard today to do. Promise these children, all of them, these are all our children, promise them an opportunity to succeed. And when they do, then we will profit by that success. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me take that little journey in front of everybody. Appreciate it. Over and out.
Thank you, Breann, and thank you, Lincoln Elementary. Next on our agenda is an early childhood programs presentation. Julie Midas, Director of Early Childhood Programs, along with staff, will present.
Good evening, Chair Dolgren, Superintendent Jett, and school board members. My name is Julie Midas. I'm the Director of Early Childhood Programs. I will be giving you a broad overview of our early childhood programs this evening. So our early childhood programs provide services to children from birth to age five and their families. We're a four-star parent-aware rated program, which is the highest possible rating. We earned that rating because we only employ licensed early childhood teachers. We used an approved curriculum, and we also use an approved assessment tool. This evening, I will be providing you with information on the following early childhood programs and their funding streams: early childhood family education, early childhood screening, Help Me Grow Referral and Evaluation System, our birth-to-age-three early intervention services, our preschool programs, and our home visiting programs. I'll begin with our early childhood family education programs. Brain research confirms that the first three years are extremely critical period in a child's development, especially in the areas of language, literacy, emotional regulation, and social competence. The parental influence on these areas of development is critical and sets the foundation for school readiness and success. So the purpose of our early childhood family education program is to support the parent-child relationship and to provide the parent with child development and guidance information. We offer a variety of early childhood family education classes to meet the needs of all families. Some of those classes are specific age ranges for our infants and toddlers. And then we have classes that are for multi-aged children, such as Itsy Bitsy Yoga, our family time, Help Me Grow, A Taste of Preschool, Super Saturdays for dads and children, and many more. So the first portion of the class time is spent with the parent and child interacting together. And then the second portion of class, the children separate from their parents. The children then continue to explore and learn with an early childhood teacher, while the parents go with a parent educator to discuss child development and other parenting issues that they may have. The funding stream for early childhood family education includes local and state funds as well as parent tuition. Next, I'm going to just show you a short video to give you a look at the inside of early childhood family education. ECFE is a great place for parents to come with their small children. It's a chance for them to be together outside of the house with a really great environment to learn and explore together. Parents learn a lot of things about parenting, things that they struggle with, things that they enjoy. They can share both their joys and their struggles, get a lot of resources and support from other parents and parent educators. I have two kids at home. I started ECFE about three and a half years ago. I'm a stay-at-home mom, so it allows us to get out and interact with other kids and adults. I think it allows the kids to trust other adults and trust other kids and build good relationships that allow them to use throughout life.
In our ECFE classes, we do circle time, which includes stories, songs, and in several classes, we do baby doll circle time. All of that is to help build energy, be able to connect and build relationships with families. And we get to teach our concepts of body parts and also regulation of our children and parents during that time.
Great white shark, great white shark. Go, 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 Hazel.
Oh, yeah. It's been eaten by a...
Really big.
Moon swells, moon swells, sparking in the water.
Tap your knees, tap your knees, tap your knees, and you're strong. Stand up, stand up, stand up. Stand up, stand up, stand up, and you're strong.
Always fun. Next is early childhood screening. Early childhood screening is a requirement for entrance into the Minnesota public schools or within thirty days of enrollment into kindergarten. Screening is just a quick and simple check of how children are doing between the ages of three and five. The purpose is actually to identify in an early-stage possible learning or health concerns so that children can get needed help before starting school. Early childhood screening is not a kindergarten entrance test. The early childhood screening includes the following assessments. We look at a child's vision and hearing. The developmental pieces are cognitive, fine and gross motor, language, and social-emotional development. We ensure their immunizations are up to date. If they're not, we give them help with that. We look at the child's physical growth. We're doing their height and weight. And then we also look at risk factors that influence learning and refer for healthcare coverage if needed. At the end, we do give a summary report to the parent on where their child is currently The Help Me Grow referral system is another system that identifies children that may need help reaching their developmental milestones. Referrals are reviewed by a multidisciplinary team. The team includes an early childhood special education teacher, speech-language pathologist, social worker, school psychologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist, and audiologist. If the team deems it necessary for further assessment, if the team deems that further assessment is needed to be completed to see if the child does qualify for early childhood special education, and if they do qualify, the child, we work with the parent to get permission and then also with their input as well, and we write an individualized education plan for them. This next slide shows the referrals for the children from birth to age three. So far this school year, we have received two-hundred-and-fifty-four referrals in this age category. You can see that most of the referrals came from physicians, followed by the public health department, and then also parents. We have received two-hundred-and-sixteen referrals for children ages three to five so far this school year. In this age range, most of the referrals came from our early childhood screening team, followed by parents, physicians, and then Head Start. This next slide shows the students that we are currently serving in early childhood special education. The majority of students that we serve are ages three to five. And then the next graph just shows our total enrollment. So we have a total of three-hundred-and-sixteen students that are currently on an individualized plan, early childhood special education. And then the general education is eight-hundred-and-ninety-five, and that includes children in ECFE, home visiting, as well as preschool programs. Our birth-to-age-three intervention services are for children from ages birth to five that have an IFSP, which is an individualized family service plan. Our services are conducted in the child's home. The frequency of the visits depend upon the child's age and their goals. This next picture gives you a look at an early intervention home visit. In this photo, you see the physical therapist is reviewing records while the teacher is working with the child to build their fine motor skills. And then the next photo is showing the physical therapist actually working on the child's gross motor skills. Our preschool program prepares the whole child for learning. Our curriculum is lined with the Minnesota Early Childhood Indicators of Progress. We're currently offering nine sections of three-year-old preschool classes, and our three-year-old classes are two days per week, and they have twelve students in a class. Our four-year-old classes run four days a week. We currently have twenty-seven sections for our fours, and each of the classes are two hours and fifty minutes in length. We have several funding streams that support our preschool classes. Those funding streams include early childhood special education, school readiness funds, Pathway Two scholarship grants, a preschool pilot grant from the state of Minnesota, voluntary pre-K funding, which are General One funds, and tuition from families. This next short video will provide you with a little more information on our preschool
We provide an inclusion model for four-year-olds in our St. Cloud district. We work together as a co-team, providing learning activities for all of our four-year-olds. Within that model, we use multimedia through the Smart Board, through small group, direct instruction, and just modifying it for each of our learners, whether they have special education identified needs or not. We have a lot of fun. We try and give them all kinds of modes of learning, whether it's visual or movement or, and getting them outside in the beautiful, beautiful world.
Coming to preschool, we can teach the kids the social skills, some of the academics that helped them along the way in kindergarten, but since kindergarten has shifted to academics, it is nice to get them started in preschool.
We do everything that we can for the whole child. We start with the three-year-olds, and when they step up into the four-year-old class, we do a little bit more with individual instruction, small group. We squeeze everything in for academics that we can, also fine motor, gross motor, have time for music, language, literacy, math, art, and also gym. time for music, language, literacy, math, art, and also gym, races, snack, whatever we do. We try and squeeze it in within the two and a half to 45-minute class.
The following two slides will show you our assessment data from fall to winter. The assessment tool that we use is Teaching Strategies Gold. This report is showing the percentage of children meeting or above the growth range for our three-year-old classes, and as you can see by the numbers, most students are meeting or exceeding their growth range. This next slide shows the assessment data for our four-year-olds. Again, you can see most of the children are meeting or exceeding their growth ranges. Here is a student showing the growth he has made this school year. He's currently writing the morning message on the smart board for the rest of the class. He's just made outstanding progress. And as you can see by the smiling faces, these children are truly enjoying pajama day. And our goal in early childhood is to ensure that learning is always fun for the children so that they develop a love for learning. We also offer a home visit program. Licensed parent educators provide individualized instruction for families and resources that are needing just extra assistance. The parent educator can assist with things such as creating bedtime routines to help resolve sleeping issues. They also assist with attachment concerns, feeding issues, behavior concerns, and again, any concern that the parent may have in raising their child. Funding for home visits also come from state and local funds as well as a grant from United We offer specialized classes. We currently continue our class at the jail, our Inside-Out Connection class for inmates at the Stearns County Jail, and then we also offer parenting on the outside for significant others and the children living on the outside while their parent is incarcerated. We have a partnership with Center Care. We offer the Amazing Baby Class for new parents and their brand-new infants. We also offer a Young Parents Class at McKinley, which focuses on our young teen parents. We offer several community events for families. The events include Run and Read. Those are offered three times per year in the months of January, February, and March to give the parents an opportunity to come out during some of our coldest winter months. Our Fall Festival is held in October. Our Spring Fling is held in May, and our Celebration of Fatherhood is held in June at Lake George. This slide shows the number of children and families served in our early childhood program so far this year. 689 adults in early childhood family education, 755 children in that program. Our Birth-to-Three Early Intervention Services provides services for 101 children. We've completed 30 to 40 visits with families. We have 84 students in our inclusive three-year-old preschool classes, 408 in our four-year-old inclusive preschool classes, and then 36 students in non-inclusive programming. Accountability and Oversight. The Minnesota Department of Education requires us to do a report on all of these programs that I've talked to you about this evening. And then looking ahead to the next school year. So, this fall, we'll have at least one classroom of four-year-old preschool at each of our elementary buildings. Our three-year-old preschool classes and our programming for our birth-to-three-year-olds remain at the Early Childhood Building, which is currently located at Colts and St. Joe. The early childhood team is very excited about the new building and is looking forward to construction beginning this June. And the new Quarry View Education Center will actually house our birth-to-three intervention services, our early childhood family education classes, our preschool classes for three-year-olds, and most of our four-year-old classes will remain out at their home schools so that those four-year-old children can have the opportunity to have that experience where they'll attend their future years of school. So, on behalf of all of the early childhood staff, I want to say thank you for your continued support of the early childhood program. And any questions?
Thank you, Julie, for a great report. I'm a former secondary administrator in this district, and I still haven't fully comprehended all of the things that we are doing in the preschool area in our district. It's just phenomenal, the programs that we have, the opportunities that we provide, and the supports that we can give to parents and young children. So, great job to you and the entire staff on what you're doing. I wanted to just ask a question about the two new programs, or I guess program expansions that we have this year because of special funding from the legislature. And those would be the EL preschool program, which I understand allows 81 students currently who otherwise would not be in our preschool program to be attending preschool. This is the four-year-old preschool program, and that the assessment results indicate they're doing phenomenally well, actually even a little bit higher than the assessment results for the overall program as I review them. And then the second one was the voluntary preschool program, the Governor's Program that was started this year with special funding. How many students are involved in that program?
So, our voluntary pre-K students, there's 95 students.
95?
Yep.
So, it's nearly 200 students in District 742 are receiving, or have received the opportunity to attend preschool this year who otherwise would not have been.
That's correct. With the additional dollars for expansion has made a great difference for us and those children and families.
Good. And of course, Mr. Moncalf always likes to look over this way and talk about funding for the future for educational programs as Chair of the Legislative Committee, but that is certainly an area and a topic that we are raising with our local legislators, and as you know, we are, have invited the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Casilius, to visit St. Cloud in mid-April, April 12th, and see the great job that's going on and the impact that this program is having on students, and hopefully the legislature will see the value and will continue to support education, the preschool education component, so.
We're very excited about that as well.
Thank you for the great job you're doing.
Monica?
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to see you here. I'd like you to talk to us a little bit about the importance and the difference between EL students and dual-language students, and I'd like you to talk a little bit more about that and what challenges you need and what are you looking for in that area.
So, as far as our students go and our programs go, while we receive additional dollars, our preschool opportunities are same across the board. And so, what we're finding with our little people is that it's easiest for them to actually catch on to a language. So, if you're doing a second language, it's best to learn it from birth to age five. Programming, actual programming for English-language learners does not begin until kindergarten age, and so what we have done is employed paraprofessionals that are bilingual so that the students have the opportunity to communicate with someone in their home language.
Are we still having a, what is it, a coracatra group studying that?
A what group?
There was a team from the University of Minnesota that was studying dual-language learners, and they have teams in different schools. I believe at some point the district was interested in that, but I don't know what happened with that.
To study dual-language learners and teaching... In early childhood. I guess, being new to the district, I don't have any background knowledge on that piece. It would be a great opportunity, but I'm sure it's just because of the funding sources, the way early childhood is funded is separately than the K-12 system, and so we receive fewer funds than even the K-12 system receives. So, that, I'm sure, I'm almost positive that would be the reason why is funding.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Bruce.
Julie, at last month's Community Linkage and Engagement Committee meeting, we had a presentation from a young woman. She and her sister, East African women, and they have an early childhood preschool, an early childhood program at a private academy. And it just occurred to me when she was making a presentation that there are other children that ultimately come into our school district, go to our public schools, but for whatever reasons, and oftentimes it might be in this case because these children that are in this particular academy are East African children, and those mother, and the other teachers are, for the very most part, all teachers certified, licensed, educated teachers that are working in those things. But my musing here is just, is there ever opportunities for partnering and things like that or just sharing and things like that? Do you have opportunities ever to become engaged with other locales that are doing this within our district?
Yes, I'm always open to collaboration because we can do more for families when we work together. Our early childhood program is a part of the Partners for Student Success Team as well as the United Way Early Learning, Early Literacy Teams, and being a part of those teams really brings all of the community partners together. So, that is a way we do connect with each other, and outside of that, I'm always personally interested in collaborating because we can, as I said, do more for students and families when we work together.
Really, really happy to hear you mention that the Partners for Student Success initiative that is based upon this notion of collective impact. It takes an entire community collectively to make an impact on our children, and so I, Mr. Superintendent, I would say this to you then so that I'm not talking directly to one of our employees, but is there an opportunity sometime that I could connect these people from that academy, just in making connections with our people? Yes, please. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie, for the presentation. Willie. Hold on.
Just as I was sitting here, I was waiting and wondering, and I'm not, it hasn't happened, so I needed to say that I'm impressed with the, I'm going to use the wrong term, but the show of force or support in green.
They're an awesome team.
And I think they're outstanding, so.
Thank you. Yes, they're very happy with the new buildings happening, and we're having an awesome year with programming and servicing our children and families, so we're having a great year.
Yep, and that item J that we polled earlier, when we voted yes on that, that means that the bids were accepted and we're moving forward, and there's no turning back, so it's real. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
For the presentation.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is Tracy Flynn-Foe to provide information regarding adjustments in programs and positions.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, Superintendent Jett, board members. This is my second update on our staffing process that's been underway. I'm happy to be here tonight and out of the room I've been in for 10 hours a day for the last four days with boards for every one of our schools and 800 sticky notes with pictures of staff, trying to make sure we've got a home for everybody and everybody in their place. So, the update on that progress tonight is, tonight we're talking just about the changes in FTE that we're projecting for next year, and you all have that summary in front of you. And so, you'll see in terms of elementary positions, we're looking at a reduction of about 11 positions next year based on current enrollment projections. And if you look down that list, that amounts to three elementary grades, one through five sections, two sixth-grade sections, those are the sixth-grade sections that are moving to south, four kindergarten sections, et cetera. So, that's how you read that chart for board members that have not seen this before. And so, the elementary sections are dictated by enrollment in those schools, and again, those are enrollment projections that we have today, and they could be different 30 days from now. In the subject areas, those are the secondary numbers, and those are based on enrollments and also on course registrations for the high schools, which courses the students have registered for for the next year. So, you'll see those projections, and those are a little more stable than our elementary positions, but there is a total reduction projected of 4.85 FTE. In the subject areas related to special education and English-language learners, you'll see that we're projecting an increase of five positions in EL. And again, based on enrollment and our programming requirements, we've been undergoing some changes in that based on the audit, and that's our projections at this point, that we'll need five additional positions in EL, stable in nursing, and a reduction of 2.5 positions in special education. Does anybody have any questions about those projections?
Jerry?
Would it be correct that the number of FTE changes is the product of the current ratio, whatever times the estimated enrollment? There's no, there's no change in the, in the ratio in here?
That's correct. So, the board adopted ratios have been here for longer than I have been, and so we take the numbers and we apply the ratio. There's a slightly different ratio for each grade level, and that gives the FTE that each building is assigned to use in order to staff their building.
Thank you.
Bruce.
Tracy, would that be true also for special education? That we're...
Education works on a workload formula. There's a workload analysis formula, and it's much more complicated than the general education staffing formulas and...
Would the reduction of 2.5 staff indicate a reduction in total number of special needs students in the district, though?
And I defer to Carol because they've been working hard for two weeks on that. She can probably be much more precise than I will be.
Our December 1st child count was actually identical to last year, 2,305 students. We are just being a little bit more creative in how we service students, and so we see the slight reduction in staff moving forward for this next year.
Okay.
Questions? Okay, and I'll remind you that this doesn't necessarily, when you look at FTE, translate into people. We've had about, we'll have about 25 to 30 retirements this year. We'll have resignations of teachers that are moving out of the area or choosing other courses at this point, and so we have a lot of degrees of freedom in terms of placing existing staff, so that's not going to be a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, doesn't have anyone's name attached to it, so I'll take it. The St. Cloud Public Schools and the Board of Education will be recognizing all 2016-17 retiring employees on Monday, May 8, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. The event will be held at Apollo High School. So, anyone that would like to attend that, it's a great event. Next, the district top 10 student recognition. The Board of Education will host a reception honoring the top 10 students of Apollo and the top 10 students of Tech High Schools. It will be held on Tuesday, May 30, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. right here at City Hall. That event will be televised on Charter Cable Channel 179. And then lastly, awarding diplomas for Apollo and Tech. Apollo and Tech High Schools will hold their respective commencement exercises on Thursday, June 1, and Friday, June 2, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. at the Rivers Edge Convention Center. Two board members per school are to be appointed to award diplomas to the graduates. All board members are encouraged to attend the commencement exercises, and stage seating will be provided. If you are interested in handing out diplomas, please let me know. We have four spots available. Some of us, many of us have done it before, and some of us have never done it. It's kind of a fun thing to do. Next is the summary of the March Work Session and preview of the April Work Session. Marcia Baish, the Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, Superintendent Jett, and members of the board. I'm going to provide a summary of the March I'm going to provide a summary of the March 8th Work Session. The first topic on the agenda that evening was the American Indian Parent Committee Resolution. Lacey Locken, American Indian Parent Coordinator, presented information and reviewed the resolution with board members, which will be submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education. She also shared and presented some information on the Indian Education Program Plan. The next item on the agenda was the New Early Childhood Community Education Building Naming Committee Recommendations. Joni Olson, Executive Director of Student Achievement and Strategic Alignment, provided information about the process that was utilized in arriving at recommendations for naming the new Early Childhood Community Education Building. She stated that the process followed the procedures that are outlined and established in Board Policy 899 entitled Naming New Schools. The committee was comprised of community education staff, early childhood program staff, parents, community members, and business members, including representatives from the city of White Park. The committee reviewed 13 names that were suggested by members for their geographic and/or historical significance. The recommended names were carefully considered and researched to ensure that they were not duplicative of streets, parks, schools, or businesses in the area, and did not hold any sort of negative connotation. Acronyms also, for each name were reviewed to ensure that they were not acronyms for businesses or inappropriate for an educational setting. The naming committee members, Dr. William Morgan, who is a local historian, and Julie Midas, Director of Early Childhood Programs, presented the following recommended names that were arrived at by consensus and listed in order of preference. Quarry View Education Center, which was named for the local geographic features, two is the Endeavor Education Center, named for Shuttle in the Space Program, and three, Quarry Brook Education Center, named for local geographic features. There was board consensus to bring forth Quarry View Education Center as the name for the new Early Childhood Community Education Building. The new, the next item on the agenda was the new high school update. Charles Eisenreich, Principal of Tech High School, presented an update since the last February workshop. And included in that update, he talked about a technology visioning workshop, which was held on February 28. And at this workshop, school staff, parents, students, and community members had the opportunity to discuss what the vision was for technology use not only in the new high school but also across the district. And the biggest takeaway from that session was to make sure that we have a solid infrastructure in place to accommodate the ever-changing technologies that we will experience over the coming decades and at the same time staying within our parameters. Principal Eisenreich also stated that as we move closer to completing the schematic design phase of the project, that we're moving closer to completing that and entering the design development phase, which means that near the end of April, subcommittees consisting of staff from both Tech and Apollo will be convened to look at the various spaces in the building. Andrea Swanberg, Activities Director at Tech High School, shared research on three facility options for gymnastics program, staying within the project parameters. David Leopold, Architect of IIW Minnesota, reviewed the project parameters, and Scott Krenner, Cunningham Group Architect, provided an update on the overall plan, noting that we're close to completing the schematic design. Mr. Leopold then also provided a site update, stating that meetings continue with the city and the county regarding access to the site, specifically off Highway 74. Mr. Krenner then shared a three-dimensional conceptual design model of the new site. The last, no, not the last, but the second to the last item on the agenda was the gymnastics program space discussion. Board Member Bruce Hentges brought forth a fourth option, which was discussed by board members. The last item on the agenda was Section 300 Board Policies. Tracy Flynn-Boe, Executive Director of Human Resources, presented and reviewed the proposed board policy updates for Section 300. The items that are on the proposed agenda for the April 12th workshop include, again, the new high school update, the first reading of Policy 506, which is the student discipline policy, it's the first reading of the revised, I should say, student discipline policy, Section 100 policies. And just yesterday, we determined that the achievement integration plan will also be shared and presented at the April 12th Work Session. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Board Policy Review, Section 300, Second Reading, Tracy Flynn-Boe.
Presented these at the last meeting, and the changes, they were really pretty de minimis on these policies relating to just updates from MSBA models. Is there any questions about any of those?
And we've all had a chance to read them and look them over, and is everyone comfortable with where we're at? This is the second reading. These will be presented at the April 12th Work Session for a third and final reading, which will then be an adoption. So does anyone have any questions concerning Section 300 policies? Thank you, Tracy. Next is the Superintendent's Report. Willie Jett.
Good evening, Chair Dolgren, member of the board. Excuse me. Recently, District 742 staff members attended the Gala, the Gala for Goals, a fundraising event for the Sine Foundation. In attendance were the principals and staff from Apollo, North, South, and Tech, as well as the two Staff Members of the Year. Kim Johnson was named Staff Member of the Year. She is the St. Cloud Program Manager for the Sine Foundation Dreamline Program. Jessica DeLeon was also named Staff Member of the Year from St. Cloud. Her position with the Dreamline Program is Promise Fellow Coach. In addition, Principal Adam Home from Apollo and Assistant Principal Steve Lucas from Tech High School were guest speakers at the event. And as someone who attended that event in St. Paul, it was an outstanding moment in time, and the people from St. Cloud, we were represented extremely well. Second, last month, a group of six students and two staff members from the McKinley Area Learning Center participated in MAPS Star's Legislative Day at the State Capitol. Alternative schools from around the state identified a group of student leaders whose task it was to discuss the importance of alternative schools and programs with their state senators and representatives. The group from McKinley met with Representatives Tim O'Driscoll, Tammy Teice, Jeff Howe, and Jim Maubrock, as well as Senators Jerry Ruff and Michelle Fischbach. MAPS Stars is an organization for secondary students and alternative programs across the state of Minnesota, and the organization sponsors three annual events during the year. In addition to Legislative Day, there's a Fall Leadership Conference and a Spring Events Conference. Next, Elizabeth Witzel, an Apollo ninth grader, and John Bion, Tech, a Tech ninth grader, auditioned and were selected from students throughout the state to be part of the Minnesota Middle Level Honors Orchestra. It's an outstanding accomplishment for both of those students. And finally, congratulations to the 2013 Tech graduate Tyler Benning, who earned a perfect score on the NCAT, the College Entrance Examination for Medical School. Benning is currently a senior at St. Olaf and plans to apply to several medical schools, including Minnesota, Mayo, Stanford, Duke, Michigan, to name a few. Back home in Tyler country, none of us are surprised at Tyler's success. A national merit scholar involved in many activities while in high school, Tyler has always made us 742 proud. And that concludes my Superintendent's Report.
Thanks. Next, we're into the Standing Committee Reports. First up is the Board Development Policy and Governance Committee, Shannon Haas.
The Board Development and Policy Committee meeting will be next week, so therefore I will provide an update at our Wednesday Work Session, and we're missing out this time.
Thank you. Community Linkages, Bruce Mose.
So our monthly meeting was held on Tuesday, March 9. As I mentioned earlier, the linkage presentation, part of that was a presentation by Amal Hassan from Hope Academy, and she informed us about the programming and the funding and the curriculum needs and the expectations of her enterprise. In our community engagement outreaches, I think I'd like to ask Member Jeff Polrice to talk briefly about the engagement April 6, excuse me, the April 6 Community Safety Event at North Junior High School. Jeff?
Thank you. If you look in your packets, I did put a copy with Bruce's permission to the flyer that the District Castle graciously created. The April 6 event is at North Junior High. It's from 6 to 8 p.m. It's called Safety Inside and Out. St. Cloud Area School District Board of Education, Community Lincoln, and Engagement Committee invites you to attend the free community event. Basically, we're going to have Allison Fay from the Jacob Wetterling Resource Center come and speak about child safety, safety skills that parents can teach their kids. That's going to be from 6 to 7. Then from 7 to 7:30, we're going to have a lady coming from Gold Cross Ambulance. She's going to talk about a couple surprising things that I'm not going to mention, but she's also going to talk about bike, swim safety, just some other safety things that parents and kids can practice to make a safer summer inside and out to school. And then from 7:30 to 8, it's going to be Sarah Gangl from the St. Cloud Police Department. She's one of the liaison officers. She's going to talk about cyber safety, some safety skills and practices that you can do in school, internet, that kind of stuff. Looking forward to it. It's hopefully a well-attended event. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Polrice, and thank you for your leadership in putting this together and getting all the i's dotted and t's crossed on it. Thank you very much. Also on that evening, April 6, is a Greater St. Cloud Talent Summit at the Rivers Edge Convention Center. Member Shannon Haas is going to attend that, and that will be part of our engagement outreach. Shannon, is there anything you want to say about that?
No, just that that's in the morning, so I'll be able to attend both events, and I'll report back after the attendance.
Thank you very much. Also, as part of an engagement outreach, this Friday, or tomorrow, that is, at the Tuscan Center, beginning around 5 o'clock p.m., it's the second cohort of young people in our community that are going to go through a leadership training, and that was part of the Jugad Leadership Academy report that was made to us two meetings ago. And this is the second year of the leadership training. And I'm going to be attending that tomorrow night, and I'm also privileged to have been asked to be one of the persons in the community amongst many that will be teaching some of those leadership skills during the six, eight-week period that's coming up. Also, wanting to just note that we are still trying very much to populate our committee, and if there's any members of the board that have some ideas, the persons that I can contact that we can broaden our committee membership, it would be very helpful. Our next meeting is on this, April 13, 7:30 a.m., in the DAO, and our presenter at that time will be Sam Court. I believe Sam is an administrative intern in our school district at Madison, and Sam will be talking about a very interesting project that he and some others, myself included, a summer ago called Soup. It's a, it's a new kind of engaging in the community where members come together and present, community members present to each other ideas about what they would like to do to broaden in the community ideas and make connections. And all the people that attend these events put money on the table. We all throw in 10, 15, 20, 25 dollars, whatever we can afford, and then at the end of those presentations, the group there chooses one of those presentations to fund, and then that group goes out and does what they said they were going to do with the money that we all put on the table. It's kind of a unique thing. It's just really kind of organic the way it works. So Sam Court's going to come to us and talk about that project at our April meeting. Mr. Chair, conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Next is Finance and Audit Committee, Jeff Polrice.
Bruce, do you mind if I add the time in?
Please.
St. Cloud Soup is this Sunday, correct?
That's right. Excuse me, thank you for that.
Yeah. 5 o'clock till 8 o'clock.
At the new brewery.
One downtown.
Beaver Island.
Beaver Island, okay. Great event.
Yep.
I also wanted, I was remiss in my duties. I want to thank Tammy in her department. All I did was light the fire on this event. They're doing all the hard work, so thank you, Tammy. Onto the School Board Finance and Audit Committee. We had our meeting on March 16, started at 7:30. Present in the room is Jerry Von Korff, Jeff Polrice, Bruce Hentges, Kevin Janischewski. The observers were Scott Andreessen, unfortunately, a lady from Wilson neighborhood that I didn't catch the name, I'm sorry, Krista Johnson, Amy Bonfig, Dwight Funenstein, they're both from Little Saints Academy. Some of the topics that we talked about are the possible future sale of the Wilson Building and other possible district assets. Kevin reviewed the processes the District has used to sell all property in the recent past by auction and by listing property for sale on our website for a month or two after we received an initial offer. Kevin recommends that the process for each sale be handled on a case-by-case basis. Kevin stated that a developer that previously expressed interest in Tech also expressed interest in Wilson, but he has not heard back from them yet. It was discussed that could a policy be developed that lists considerations when disposing of property? The committee recommended that the current practice of basing the procedures on the sale of the property on the circumstances surrounding the property be confirmed or continued without having a policy or procedure that would treat each sale exactly the same. Amy Bonfig said at that time she has no interest in making an offer to purchase Wilson. She has talked to Gary Gange and Willie about requesting an extension of the month-to-month lease that's presently in place for Wilson. Krista Johnson asked for the price of the vacant lots by Wilson and asked if he should put in an offer. Kevin told him he would email him the amount from the appraisal that was already done. If Mr. Johnson does make an offer, it would come to this committee to discuss and make a recommendation to the superintendent, who would then make a recommendation to the board. Committee also discussed the land that the district owns in the Haven Township. At that time, the, at the time the district purchased this land, the state had planned to put a new bridge across the river and a development in that area was expected. The district purchased that land at a very low price for a future middle school. The committee agreed that the district should keep this land for now as the value will only go up. We did have continued discussion on the cost and funding sources for the dedicated gymnastics space at the new high school. This was discussed at the last board meeting, and it was decided that the program has value and that adding a gymnastics space at the new high school should come to the Board Finance Committee to find funding for it. Kevin reported that the proceeds from the sale of the bonds on the new high school were approximately 2.9 million higher than anticipated, and that this money could be used to help fund the gymnastics space and/or other costs associated with the building if bids come in over the estimated budget. It was discussed why and if the gymnastics space was not included in the original design. A board member, Bruce Hentges, made a motion that we move forward, we're spending $2 million to add the gymnastics space at the new high school. Board Member Jerry feels that the recommendation should come from the superintendent. Kevin clarified that this committee makes recommendations to the superintendent, not the board, therefore this committee does not make motions. After further discussion, Bruce withdrew his motion. Kevin stated that if the bids for the new high school come in under budget, the design team committee could discuss and make a recommendation on how to spend the extra monies. Jerry suggested that rather than renovate the old Tech, the district should look into, may purchase, whatever we wanted, the Minnesota School of Business Building, see DAO discussions below, and then use the savings to fund the gymnastics area or room, $2 million roughly, and technology upgrades. The DAO discussions we had was Kevin reported that there is a development company coming to look at the Tech. They were sent there by the city of St. Cloud and are looking at it for a senior housing, possible senior housing project. They can make an offer on the building as early as May. Concern was expressed that the public feels that the district made a commitment, or at least an indication, to put the DAO at the old Tech site. Comment was made that if Tech was turned into a condominium housing for seniors, the neighborhood may be pleased and may not be upset with the DAO if it wasn't put there. The committee decided that it was interested in knowing what it would cost to get an estimate on renovating Tech to accommodate the DAO, Media Center, and Welcome Center. Suggestion was made to ask Willie to proceed to get a renovation estimate. If Willie is okay with that, with Kevin, he would contact, he would have Kevin contact ICS. ICS and Ari Morton to ask what their fee would be to determine the renovation costs, and then to have the company with the lowest price do the estimate. The 1917 and 1938 portions of tech totaling 60,000 square feet. Uh, Kevin has toured the Minnesota School of Business in Way Park, that building which is now up for sale. The building is 40,500 square feet and is exactly the amount of space we would need for the DAO Media and Welcome Center. We would need to spend approximately $200,000 to $300,000 in renovation to make it suitable. The asking price for the building is $6 million. This could be much cheaper than renovating tech. Uh, the committee feels we need the renovation estimate for tech before we can make an offer on the Minnesota businesses, Minnesota School of Business Building. Uh, we also had a conversation, Kevin brought up some information about the Clear Lake annexation. Kevin reported that the city of Clear Lake is interested in annexing the Clearview property. This would allow them access to the sewer plant. This annexation would not affect the district. The city al, also wants to do a city well on the far nearest corner to the downtown Clear, Clear Lake area, but it's on our property. Um, Kevin has given them permission to do a test to see if it is a viable place for a well. If it is, the city of Clear Lake would like to purchase that very small piece of property from the district. Um, our meeting ended at about 9:38. Our next meeting is April 20th at Apollo at 7:30, and that's, yep.
I would like to make sure that I clarify something, if that's okay, sir?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, the, there was something stated about, uh, an interest in the purchase of tech and individuals or a group, um, with some thoughts or senior housing. That was one of, I just need to make sure that it was not singularly senior housing. That was just one of the various topics that this group came in talking about, so I just wanna make sure that, that, that it's not someone saying that, that we're only, that this group was only talking about senior housing. They had other thought process to, thought processes to it. That was just one of the things that they, they mentioned.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Next Legislative Committee, Bruce Hentges.
Mr. Chair and board members, uh, our Legislative Committee met on March 17th. I have passed out our meeting minutes. Everybody should have a copy. I won't go through the whole thing, but there are some things I'd wanna point out. Um, board members Haas and Polrize, a, as well as, uh, Peter Hamerlich, uh, were in attendance, uh, at that meeting. Uh, and we started by, uh, acknowledging the February 28th budget forecast from the state, which was a very positive, uh, budget forecast, uh, about $250 million more than previously thought. Um, and so, now that that budget forecast has been made, things begin to heat up at the legislature. Um, and I just, uh, refer you to the middle of that first page where it says education funding. Governor Dayton and the Senate and the House will all present educational, uh, budget targets. The governor has laid his on the table already. He had a $605 million education, uh, budget proposal, but then with the, uh, budget forecast that came out in the middle, at the end of February, he actually upped his preschool proposal by $100 million, bringing his total, uh, to $705 million. The Senate has said their budget target for education will be $300 million, but we don't have the specifics on that yet. And the House, uh, has, uh, just recently, uh, released theirs, which is $258 million education, uh, target. Uh, you'll note just below there that it takes $371 million to increase the formula by 2% per year. $455 million in order to increase the basic education formula by 2.5%. So, you can see that the House proposal, right off the bat, doesn't even make, make the 2% formula increase, and in fact, it is just a 1.5% formula increase proposal. Going back up then, uh, a couple of things on, uh, programs or, uh, projects, uh, of particular interest, uh, interest to us. The Special Education Cross Subsidy, the committee reviewed HR 2021, I'm sorry, HF 2021, which was, uh, written by Representative Knoblock, co-authored by Tice and, uh, Jennifer Loon, who is the chair of the House Education Finance Committee. And, um, in talking with Representative Knoblock, he acknowledged that this isn't the solution to the Special Education Cross Subsidy Bill, but, uh, he said that the purpose of it is to begin to move us in that direction, and that it really supports the governor's special education proposal, uh, but it doubles the amount of funding for special education in the 2021 biennium, thereby cutting into the Special Education Cross Subsidy. And Representative Knoblock said that it would be his intention in the interim between this session and the next session to work more on a, uh, more complete plan that could address the long-term, uh, issues of the Special Education Cross Subsidy. However, when the House, uh, budget came out, just, well, I saw it today, really, in detail for the first time, um, you'll notice that the governor's recommendation was for $45 million for, uh, an increase in special education funding. The Senate has not given theirs yet. Their proposal will come out perhaps tomorrow or early next week. The House actually calls for a reduction of over $3 million in special education spending. Something that would have to be just completely unacceptable, uh, for us. Now, just, uh, Mr. Von Korf, if I could just say one thing before that. I, I have already, uh, contacted, uh, Representatives Knoblock and, um, Tice, and Representative Tice did get back to me today and say, hey, this is just the beginning, there's a lot to be discussed yet, but go ahead, Jerry.
I was just gonna say, these are the targets, so they're coming out of Representative Knoblock's committee. He's the chair of the committee, that's, he is the key player. So, if, um, if that's the number, the target for special ed, that would have his fingerprints on it.
Um, yes, so would the proposal above it. HR 2021 has his fingerprints all over it, and, and so, we're gonna continue to work with him, Representative Tice, and Representative Loon. And then, that also takes us to the preschool pilot and the voluntary, uh, preschool, uh, or pre-kindergarten funding. Uh, as I mentioned, the governor had added $100 million to his proposal, bringing that to $175 million for an expansion of the pre-K program. Right now, about 3,300 students statewide are covered by the current, uh, voluntary pre-K program. This would increase that number to, I believe, at 6,800. There are 65,000 kids, four-year-olds statewide, who ultimately could qualify for preschool, uh, education. So, it's, it's certainly not, uh, any, uh, attempt to, uh, totally address the, the challenge of preschool for four-year-olds, but it's a move in that way. Uh, the Senate, again, we don't know what their proposal is. The House has made a proposal that dramatically changes, uh, preschool funding, uh, and does away with Pathway 2 scholarships, and takes preschool out of the, uh, Department of Education, and creates a separate department that would deal with that. And, uh, I don't even claim to begin to be able to speak with any, uh, expertise on that, but it's something that we will be, uh, talking with them about. Meanwhile, District 742, uh, continues to work with, uh, our legislators and the, uh, and Representative Loon regarding our preschool pilot that we started this year. Uh, and we have invited Commissioner Casalias, as well as our local legislators, to, uh, come to St. Cloud during the legislative recess, which is April 9th to the 17th, I believe, but the date we're looking at is April 12th. As soon as the commissioner confirms that she can be here, we will complete the invitations to others, and we will show them how our, uh, preschool, um, EL pilot and our voluntary pre-kindergarten program expansion that happened last year is impacting kids in, in District 742. Other topics, uh, we did discuss the state auditor's report on standardized testing, which was given to the legislature, um, was it last Monday or a week ago Monday? I forget now, but, uh, the auditor noted that these tests create substantial challenges for schools and school districts. Obviously, as we know, uh, they do. He listed some positives and some problems. Uh, I've included some of those on, uh, this form, and, and you can take a look at them. A couple of other bills of significance that we'll want to, uh, be following would include a different, Gifted and Talented Funding Bill coming out of the Senate, uh, which would increase funding for gifted and talented programs from $13 per pupil to $39 per pupil, and would be a significant, uh, plus for District 742. We'll see if that appears on the Senate budget when they, or targets when they announce those. And then I mentioned the Pathway Scholarships. Concern, the bill that would eliminate those scholarships, there's an explanation of the impact that that would have on District 742. And then finally, uh, the tax credits and scholarship proposals for private education and private school tuition, uh, that, uh, would, in reality, take money away from public schools and pass that money to, uh, to private schools. Uh, we will continue to, uh, monitor and, and to oppose, frankly, so. Um, our next meeting will be on Friday, April 21st. Unless there's any questions. Or Jeff had a comment, remember?
Jeff?
Bruce, what site are you thinking about for that tour?
Pardon?
The tour for the state education lady, is that?
Which site?
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna be at Discovery, uh, Community School, right. We don't have a confirmation yet from the commissioner, but we're hoping for tomorrow, so.
Um, question for you on that. Is that publicly noticed if we would have more, I mean, if you're thinking of going and, I mean, if there's more than three people there, it really should be publicly noticed?
If there's more than three?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then we'll make sure that we publicly, it wouldn't hurt probably to have the press along, uh, for it anyway, but, um, uh, I'll, we'll check on that. We'll find out which board members can attend, and then we'll do what's necessary.
Bruce?
Um, Mr. Chair, I, I don't have a question of, uh, Member Hentges, but I, I just wanna remark that I just can't imagine that there's any, uh, any other school district, any friends of ours in any other school district that have a legislative committee as well, uh, chaired and, and versed upon legislative matters than we do. Mr. Hentges, you just are becoming the model, the best practice for that kind of committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Monica, Monica Segura-Schwarz and the Personnel Committee.
I had a question.
Next is Monica with a question.
Actually, it's a comment. Um, the Minnesota Latino Affairs Council is working in a bill for increasing teachers of color in the state, and, um, like, I'd like to, um, suggest that you look into it.
I have noticed that there is a bill, and I, I don't remember if it was on the House, uh, proposal or the governor's, but there is something out there, but yes, I will, uh, I'll check that out and see what it is.
I can give you information about that if you need to.
Now, Monica Segura-Schwarz, Personnel and Negotiations Committee.
We didn't have any pending issues at this time. We didn't have a meeting. Um, we are working in, in getting other, um, partnerships going.
Thank you. And next is Integration and Equity Committee, and that's not correct, it is.
The Achievement and.
Achievement.
Integration and Equity Committee met yesterday. Uh, Bruce Hentges, Monica Segura-Schwarz, and myself. We had a full complement of staff. Um, thank you for that. Marcia Beis, my mic's not on?
No, I said I didn't judge.
Um, Joni Olson, Sebastian, uh, were there. We met for an hour and a half and focused on the draft, uh, Achievement and Integration Plan. And, um, we got a full, um, you know, the, this is the four-year, um, uh, re-upping of the plan, so every year up until this year, the plan that we looked at and approved kind of in a perfunctory way was from the template plan that we had four years ago. And, um, last time, four years ago, when we got the plan, it was kind of done on an emergency basis, this I think is before your time, but there was this sense on the, uh, both the committee and the board that, my goodness, it was, it was being rushed, and, and, uh, it was partly the MDE's fault, but, but we didn't really feel like we had a, a great opportunity to, um, understand and embrace the plan. This, uh, plan, uh, was ready to come to us. It seemed like it was, uh, a, a, much more effort and involvement had been expended on getting the plan ready to come to the, to the superintendent and the board than previous plans. Uh, we got all of our questions answered, and I think that the, it's fair to say that the committee's, um, uh, reaction was, was quite positive, and I think our position is that should the superintendent, um, bring it to the board, uh, when, when it is in final form, that the committee is going to be, uh, supporting the superintendent's recommendation. Um, one of the, uh, pieces of the plan that, I mean, there's a lot of differences, and the, I think you heard the board, the committee recommended, along with the staff, that it would take about 20 minutes of the workshop, um, uh, that you, when you look at the plan, and if you see the plan in advance, that you're not, we don't expect that you're gonna find things that are causing you pain or that, that you find controversial, that, that that's gonna be, uh, good enough. If you look at the plan and feel differently, you know, uh, you should let the superintendent know. But I just wanted to mention that one of the changes in the, um, plan is the use of the star growth model as a indicator of progress. And, uh, generally, I think that's a, a positive, um, thing, but for those of you that have not seen the star growth model, it is deceptive, deceptively complicated. And, um, it's invasive, based on a complicated, uh, statistical formula, and probably, as the board begins to work with that, some point, we're gonna want an explanation of what the heck it means. If you think for a minute, if I have to tell you how your kid is doing in school, if I tell you that they made a year's growth or, uh, or a year and a half's year's growth, that tells you something, but it doesn't tell you where the heck they are. You know, they might be three grades behind and made a year of growth. So, the growth model is wonderful, but it, it also has some challenges in trying to understand what it means. Um, so, enough of that. We have been eating around the edges on the committee and really haven't had adequate time, um, to talk about a discussion that has been in and out of this board on the topic of, um, what do we want from, um, schools and the, the district on, um, the measurement of student, um, uh, progress? And, uh, um, so, we've been using, um, the MCA III, um, statistics for, and aggregating those. So, for, for example, tonight, we saw Lincoln at 40% and, at, for reading, and in that 40% was 18% of the students who were English language learners. And the testing folks, not our testing folks necessarily, but the nationwide testing folks say that the. say that the M C A three proficiency tests are not a good measure of how we're doing with those kids. About 11% of them are reaching proficiency and mostly people want us to look at how fast they are getting from level one to level six. But yet we average their scores, the 11% of them that are proficient, into the total school. And then another 18 to 20% of the kids in that 40% that you saw tonight was special ed students. And the reading proficiency rate for special ed students in our district and at that school is around 20%. So, and those kids, those kids are unique. Some of them are really, really fast learners and some of them are not fast learners. And that's why they have individual education plans, but we average their scores together as if they were generic. And then we average that 18% who's scoring at about a 20% proficiency level into the Lincoln total. And lost in that is what are the other kids doing? And I think that's enough that I can say tonight because this is such a complicated topic. And I know that Bruce Hentges feels very strongly about it. We've exchanged some emails and so on and so forth, but we want to be able to say to the, just, I'll say this as an editorial, we want to be able to say to the E L L parents, we measure your students' progress and they're making as much progress as they possibly can under the circumstances. And that number doesn't come from the M C A three proficiency scores because that's measuring the kids who have made it, they've just made it to the top if they're proficient. And we want to be able to say to the special ed parents, your kids, whether, whatever their disability is, they're making as much progress as they possibly can. And for some of them, the M C A three proficiency or not proficiency cutoff is not, for some of them it is, but for some of them it's not. And then there's this other group of parents who want to say, my kid's doing okay. They're coming to school, ready to school. They don't have any disadvantage and they want to know, how are my kids going to do? And we're still not to the point where we're sophisticated enough, I think, and that's the discussion that we need to have on the committee. We're not going to, we're not going to solve that here tonight and we don't have consensus in the district. We don't have consensus on the committee and, but I'm hoping that we'll have that discussion as we, as we move forward. Did you want to say something? Okay. All right, that's my report.
Thank you, Jerry. Next, Bruce Mose has a special announcement.
Mr. Chair, earlier in the evening, you mentioned, you know, the graduations, of course, and things like that. It reminds us that the end of the year are coming along quite fast. And also, one of the indicators at the end of the year each year is the Partners in Education awards that are coming up. And that date is on, I'll open up an envelope here, Tuesday, April 4th, Paulo High School. In these envelopes, I'm just passing out, as part of our marketing this year of this event, because it's growing in stature and becoming a very, very significant part of our school year, we're asking each of us on the board, each of us on the dayhouse here, if we would take these 10 cards, and these are not tickets because this is not a ticketed event, but just pass these out in our communities or in our work communities or our neighborhoods or in the schools and try to generate, especially in the schools, try to, in the education fields, try to generate some interest and get people to come to this. So nonetheless, it's on Tuesday, April 4th, Paulo High School, beginning at 5:30 PM. I had a look at some of the nominations that have been coming in. They are incredible. Every single year, it sets a new standard of what people are doing and how they're doing it in our district in terms of our volunteers. So it's going to be a very, very excellent night again for our new board members. This is a program that's in its ninth year now. And, oh, I should mention this, this is good, we have a sponsor this year. A sponsor stepped up in the community and has sponsored this in its entirety. We have $1,000 from the, from Liberty Bank Minnesota. Dwayne, he just is doing so much with the LEAF program and with this program here and with the Texentennial Celebration. So we do not have, I do not have to come around and ask anybody for any money this year. And we are grateful for that, aren't we? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Next is the future agenda items for our April 12th workshop. I believe that I heard someone mention that we're going to be looking at the Integration and Equity Plan at the April 12th workshop, so that is in addition to what's on the agenda. We'll also have revised policy, 506 Student Discipline First Reading. So everyone's going to want to make sure they take the time to read through that. It's a long policy. It's a big policy and it's an important policy and it's been, this will be like the third time it's been back for the first reading, so it's been changed significantly. Then we will have a Section 100 Board Policy First Reading. I don't anticipate that that will take very long. Section 100 is a pretty short section of policies. And lastly, is our new high school update. And those have been known to go on for a while. With that, we are, what? Oh, I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Willie Jett.
Before we end the evening, one of the things I'd like to mention is from all District 742 and the District 742 family. Our heartfelt condolences, Al, for the passing of your father. And we'll be thinking about, we've been thinking about you in the past week and we'll be thinking about you tomorrow.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.